Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. We have a forum. And if we can, go out of order for a minute. Tim has another meeting to go to, so if we do the PTO update first, is that okay?
Hello. First off, we had our Scholastic Spring Book Fair, and it was a very successful event. We raised forty-one hundred dollars. And we gave over four hundred in gift certificates to qualifying students to purchase books. Teachers were given the opportunity to fill a wish list box on that Monday preview day. And then, any books that didn't get purchased by families from the wish list, the PTO purchased. So we bought two thousand dollars' worth of wish list books.
Excellent.
Out of that forty-one hundred.
I heard Family Night you had at the...
The Cheese's.
Cheese truck?
Cassie's Cheese's Truck.
Yeah, I heard it was fantastic.
Yeah.
It was delicious.
It was delicious.
Yeah, that was an interesting twist. Something new.
Yeah.
And it's a good timing with people picking up from extended day.
Yeah.
That was good. Also, for the library, the PTO has earmarked five hundred dollars for the purchase of new books or materials of their choice to scan the library however they see best. Spring Picture Day is this Thursday. It's another fundraiser. Not gigantic, but it still adds to the plot. Kindergarten registration is this Thursday and Friday, and we will have parent volunteers processing paperwork in the north office. For special activities this month, we have author and illustrator Allison Stotter, and she's coming to speak to the first grade students on Monday, April 28. And then, also, we have Julie Collier, the bird lady.
Oh, yeah.
She'll come and speak with third graders on May 6th and 7th.
Yeah.
So, some good special activities coming up.
Yeah, busy stuff.
Yes. And Teacher Appreciation Day is Tuesday, May 6th, and the PTO will be putting together baked goods and fruit platters for the faculty in recognition to their dedication to our kids at the school.
Very nice.
And finally, we had the Superintendents Academy on the Sback and Common Core, which was a very well-attended event. And the PTO got some feedback that we wanted to share with the board. A lot of parents thought it was a well-meeted conversation. They were happy about the topic and having the chance to come and learn and speak. People felt the space was too small, given the crowd, which it's difficult to predict how many people are gonna show, but something like this...
It was cozy.
Yeah, it was cozy, yeah. I was here. But something like this where you know there's a lot of pins and whatnot, maybe self-assembly could be a better venue. And another thing was not enough time was allowed, which we were here for over three hours, but it's a topic that could go on for twelve, you know? So perhaps another session would be warranted, you know? Or possibly, we had an idea to follow up where people could submit questions that get answered in the newsletter as well. And then, one other final thing was the question-and-answer period, a few people felt it wasn't facilitated equitably. Some people had the floor a lot more than others. So again, if we had a better venue with a microphone stand, kinda like they do with some of the town meeting things, where people get to stand with their questions for two minutes and then move on. But otherwise, it was...
Yeah, can I ask, was that feedback at a PTO meeting, or just...
Through emails and conversations and...
Okay.
That type of stuff. Informal type of feedback.
Tim, are you finished?
Yes.
Well, first of all, we were very happy about the turnout. It was a rich conversation, very, very rich one. And it's a nice problem to have, to struggle with the overflowing crowd. So we did try to create an intimate gathering place, though, that people felt comfortable and that was more relaxed and so on. And it's nice to be surrounded by books. And talking about books, once again, I have to say that the book fair, the book fairs are absolutely splendid. It's really a joy for anyone who goes, no matter what time of the day, to see the children's delight looking at all the different titles, and there were so many different titles. A very good collection of books, and bilingual books as well, as well as multi-generational. But I was really impressed with the, in addition, with the evening, because the book fair helped to create not only an atmosphere for learning, but also the sense of community. It really felt like a community there. You had the food wagon, you had little tables out, people sitting, families sitting, interchanging, and a very, very large crowd. So we thank you.
Did the student council do something they like, too?
Yes.
The new student council raised money?
Yeah, they did fundraising.
Yeah, I heard they were very successful. They came to the board selection meeting.
And that's the help of... That was my report. That's good.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Oh, no. Spoiler. You should've told me.
But while you mentioned it, yeah, the student council was there, so it was multifaceted. And they were raising money to help seniors in town with the fuel, a fuel fund. So once again, thank you very, very much. And we'll take your feedback on the parent academy.
Thank you, Tim. We got you out of here on time?
Plenty of time.
All right. So we don't actually have a flag here, but we should probably do that. So we could stand to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Right, the consent agenda? Marsha, I feel like I'm missing a little piece of the top. Right? Consent agenda?
Um, yes.
Is that yours, too? Okay. All right. Does anybody have anything to extract from the consent agenda? No? Okay. And we'll just, you know, all of the reports included have been reviewed at various committees. All those in favor? Opposed?
Um, I need a second on that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Do we have to vote again, or we're good?
No, you're good.
All right. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
We need Matt and Steve, because they're all like...
Second one.
Of course. All right. So, we did the PTO update. Dr. Stella, you are on.
For my report?
Yes. It came quickly. What happened tonight?
Well, good evening, everyone. I hope everyone enjoyed your spring break, whether it's Happy Passover, Easter, or just a wonderful break. It was a pleasure, a delight, to welcome the children back, even though it was a week. We missed them a lot. And they seemed happy to be back. And I always say, but it seems to be true, that parents always seem to have a little bigger smile on their return. I had the chance, as did our administrators, to, this is one of our favorite activities, and I made sure I carved time out to visit, if not every class, just about every class in the building. And the pattern that I saw was really one of student engagement, but also happy children. And whether that was the art studio, the art class, or the science laboratory, or kindergarten class, or sixth grade class, or fourth grade, didn't matter, or even watching the children at recess. It's a wonderful school, and it's something to be very, very proud of. As far as some information that I could share with you, the building upgrade, the town has been working very hard on finalizing legal documents. There's a myriad of documents connected with scope of work and finances that have to be related to the upgrade, that have to be reviewed by lawyers and signed. But we're hoping that the contract, it looks as if the contract will be signed and the necessary paperwork completed on May 1st. And then, we hope we'll hit the ground running, getting that work really started. Some of the work has happened already. For example, the second boiler, remember that dinosaur boiler there? That was removed completely or almost completely over this past week. I remember it was a short week, four days. So the team that worked on it really worked through the night. And once again, we can commend Greg Kula, because he was here every evening till the early hours of the morning. So he does a lot of work behind the scene, you know? Our silent hero there. So we're mobilizing, developing plans. Al is one of my point people, the administrative team, all of us are involved in one way or the other. But in trying to develop a plan of action to move classes, to move programs for the summer program, and to do it in a way that doesn't interfere with our educational program during the year. And again, we look forward to the contract being signed, so we can work with our project managers and so on, and get a more defined, definite way of approaching this year. The, what else can I tell you? The custodial staff worked hard this past week. It was a short week, four days, but they're busy as can be, they're a good team. And once again, we say this is a building that never sleeps. So you could clean up by three o'clock, and then by six o'clock, you have to do another cleaning, because another group of people will come in. And that's just the way we like it, of a building that's used by so many different groups from the community. The annual town budget informational meeting was held last night in the center gym, and many board members were there for that meeting. Matt Giglietti, Finance Board Chair, praised the district team and the school board for the transparency and the close collaboration that took place in developing and presenting the district's budget. So we walked away with a good feeling, at least I did, from that meeting, as far as interacting with the citizenry. The school, the Beecher Road School has been officially notified, I mentioned this before, as having been identified as a school of distinction by the Connecticut Department of Education, we have received this award under the category of highest overall performance. So Gina Prisco, as the principal representative of the Beecher Road School, myself, fortunate enough to be the superintendent of the district, will both represent the school and the district at a special ceremony at the state. And it's something to celebrate, because it's the collective work of a lot of people, including our parent staff and so on. But it's not the only measure of distinction. One of the others that I really like to see and tout is the arts program here at the school. And right before the spring break, we had a wonderful beginning band concert. Now, the beginning band, fourth graders, I think there were over ninety of them. Now imagine ninety fourth graders, beginning band, and playing their violins and so on. You would think of squeaks and things like that. But they did magnificent. They were really so enthusiastic. They captured our hearts. And there was Bill Lech, always generously giving his time in his suit and tie at night, coming back and working with it, and a packed, packed audience of supportive parents. Besides watching the children, I love to watch the parents, because I can remember, as a parent of young children, watching my children, too, and the joy that's in their hearts. So also, we have, today is Earth Day, and yes, there were activities in the school, but our really organized systemic approach to that is going to be during Arts Week in early June, when the focus is gonna be on nature. And we'll mobilize as a total school community, focusing our children on that. And another thing in the arts has to do with drama, and we have Peter Pan that's gonna be presented very, very soon. That's on May 9th at 6:30. And I would bet, that was the donor says, it'll be a standing room-only audience there. It's going to be delightful. And besides the performing arts, you're gonna see the children engaged in the visual arts, too. The scenery that they have, the stage work. So there's a place for every child, as far as who want, any child who wants to contribute, that probably went from second grade up to sixth. And it's given us ideas, because drama is so important, the arts in all the forms are important. So we're looking towards the future. How can we incorporate more and more, say, drama within the school day as well as after school? So we're taking a look at that as well. So these are the kinds of things that keep the spirit of our school alive. And even with things such as standards, Common Core, and so on, we translate everything into Beecher Road School curriculum. And that means through the arts and through everything else that we handle. The summer school update, as you know, Charles Dumais, the superintendent from Amity, and his team have really extended, and the school board from Amity have extended a welcome to Beecher Road School for our summer programs. And our directors, Al Pullo and so on, and myself, have been meeting with the different teams. It's a big project, because we're gonna have a lot of children going over there, it's a different type of facility, but we're gonna, we're gonna term it the Adventure at Amity High School. And we're gonna make it an exciting affair there. And we'll look to develop our plans of how do we move necessary furniture, how do we accommodate the welcome to kindergarten children, how do we watch out for the safety, security of children? That'll provide nursing services, health services, and things of that sort. But what impressed me was the willingness of our neighbors and our neighboring sister school district to welcome us with open arms, without a question. And then also, with Dr. Fleischman's support, we're looking at Ezra Academy, and we have a welcome there for our preschool children. It's a quieter environment for them, and this is very well-suited for them. So we have good neighbors here in Woodbridge, and we're very thankful for that. We're not sure, the catalogs for the summer programs were a little delayed for obvious reasons, because we wanted to make sure we had space, and they should be going out soon. We're not sure what the numbers will be, whether it'll be the same, or not, but we wanted to continue the programs to show community that we're not holding up for a couple of years. And so the words that we'll focus on are flexibility, adaptability, creativity, and fun. And we encourage everyone to get involved. Some of the programs that we would've had here, we can't have there because of space issues and so on, but we'll come up with other ideas for that. And I give a lot of credit to our summer school directors, who have, who are giving very generously their time and talents in endeavoring to make this work for our children. The student council was going to present tonight, but scheduling problems, they couldn't, so that hopefully they'll come back, too, and they'll have more information for you to give. But we're very pleased with the launch of the student council. We love to see our students involved. There are stewards of the land that we have, we have our Girl Scout troop involved with recycling, Mrs. Prisco's gonna talk more about that shortly. We have student council. Any way we can get our students involved in the life of the school, I think we're ahead of the game. Mrs. Prisco will give our annual wellness committee, our wellness committee serves as an umbrella for a lot of activities that are taken in place within the school, connected with the environment, wellness, and so on. And any other Beecher Road School update that you want.
So I'll actually, I have one thing with the Beecher Road School update, and it kind of falls on the heels of the book fair. We have a program here called Little Leaders, Little Readers. Some of our sixth grade students have been trained to work with our youngest, our kindergartners, in helping them in, with their reading. So as we try to build the value of community service and giving back to the community, a gift for the students who were the Little Leaders, Little Readers, our sixth grade students, was to go down to the book fair and choose a book for themselves that they would like to read. So it was a generosity of the PTO, when I first got here, a principal's gift is what they gave to me, and the remaining dollars, that's what was used to purchase those books for the children. Inside the books, one little label that said Little Leaders, Little Readers, and the child's name, and they, once they're done reading it, they will donate it back to the classroom. So it comes full circle. So it was a small token, but it certainly helps us with the understanding of, we need to give back. We've taken a lot from Beecher Road School, we've learned a lot from Beecher Road School, and this is something that we can do to carry that on for another group of students. So it's been a great program. And again, it's small, but it's really, I've sat in on a few of them, while the students are working together. The smiles from the kindergartners are unbelievable, but it's the smiles from the sixth graders that are even better. They feel so proud of themselves when, you know, a student that had stumbled over a word can now read that, and they read fluently. So I just wanted to share that as part of our Beecher Road School update, because the book fair is a great community event. It happens to have a lot of folks that come through here, but we want the students to be a part of that as well. I will, you all have the summary and the wellness report, so there's a few additional pieces that I'd like to highlight. Our booster seat campaign, so this was on a small scale for, I don't know, the last several months. Dr. Martinello, who is a member of...
We don't have the summary?
We were just looking for it.
I'm sorry.
Why don't you summarize it for us?
No problem. No problem.
This way the TV audience will hear, too.
That's okay, but we'll just...
Our booster seat campaign, Dr. Martinello's a member of our wellness committee, has been very proactive in educating us in the wellness committee about children and the height and weight in which they should be in a booster seat. So I'm not going to say the weight, because there's quite a varying degree of recommendations, but the height is pretty standard. The recommendation is four foot nine. Four foot nine, under four foot nine, it's booster seat time, is kind of what has been posted for us. So if I tape off my heels, it made me stand next to...
Yeah.
So, although I do make the requirement, so I don't need a booster seat. But we have posted something that parents can measure their children next to, right at parent pickup. So there's signs on either side that explains what the recommendations are, different kinds of seats, and then there's the newer, so to speak, so that children can... We don't have a large number of children who aren't riding the booster seats that should, but as children get to a little bit older age, they no longer want to. And this just takes the onus off the parent and says, sorry, that's the rules. So that, so we thank Dr. Martinello for that. She was actually down in DC on another item, and she ended up being able to speak and talk about this. So it's been great for us. Our cafeteria, Al Pullo, our business manager, and Jane Roddy have visited some other schools to see how it's done in other places, and they'll take back the best of what they've seen. I think we have a pretty good cafeteria, and I eat the salads frequently. But some new menu items have been introduced. I'll share them with you. Cherry blossom chicken, pulled pork sandwiches, two new types of pizza, deep dish and French bread, and coming this Friday, chicken with a twist, diced chicken with rotinis and Alfredo sauce. So there's something else. We have made a connection with a parent, John Van Becker, and I talked about possibly introducing a Subway concept thing to the cafeteria, but I can't let John take the credit. It actually was his persistent daughter who said, "We need to do something about this." So Al and John have been speaking back and forth, and so they'll be investigating the possibilities. We have a wellness committee meeting coming up, and I believe it's a taste testing.
There is.
So I'm sure it'll be well-attended that day.
I'll volunteer for the committee.
So the Girl Scouts and Sustainability, we met with a troop of Girl Scouts, Dr. Stella and myself, presented themselves very well. They had done all of the work, and they requested to do an audit of all of our recycling bins. So with the help of our custodial staff, they came one evening and did a very, very thorough job, and then presented us with the data of where do we need more recycling bins, who's missing them. That is something that they've taken on as a project for a badge to, a sustainable event at your school, I guess would be the way to phrase it. So they, we've been working with them. They'll continue to look for ways in which to provide further recycling support, but they've also been talking to Dr. Stevanger, and they will be scheduling a meeting with her after school, as they didn't realize how much goes into becoming a green school. So that work will continue. Our environmental stewards and sustainability, also, Dr. Stevanger. There's two groups of stewards. So far, they have talked to all of the students in the cafeteria more about what not to throw on the recycling bins. Everybody knows, put your water bottles in there, and if you have a can, but sometimes trash ends up in there. So they spoke to all of the students during lunch waves, and they've also learned a little bit about single-stream recycling, and they plan to go to some of the classes to talk about that. Masara Farm and Sustainability, Dr. Stevanger again, has also been the liaison, she's been in communication with our mag team and representatives from Masara Farm. I'm also looking for ways in which to expand it beyond our mag team. Finally. Finally. Birthday celebrations. I can't, it was a recommendation from the wellness committee that we use an alternative to food for birthday celebrations as an initiative this year. And Dr. Martinello was part of that. We know children have baseball games or piano recitals and chess club, and at their birthday, there usually tends to be a treat that they might bring. Add all those, plus the twenty treats in the classroom for all of the birthdays. So when we talked about that, we said, well, we'd like to have food, we don't want to exclude food. Food is part of celebration for many families and for many of the children here at Beecher. So we decided last year that we would present this year as an alternative to food, something other than that. There have been seeds planted, crafts made, books donated, guest readers, older brothers, older sisters, grandmas, grandpas, coming in, reading to the class, and then donating the book. Many alternatives. So I do thank, it's the parents that I have to thank, because you've supported this and you've found alternative ways in which to celebrate your child's birthday. The classroom teacher does, they'll come down to the office, a birthday sticker, a birthday bookmark, or a pencil. But we do appreciate that, and we'd like to continue that, because absolutely, dessert, sweet treats are part of your life, but moderation is key. And we do continue to promote moderation, but also at our other celebrations in which we do have food, healthy snacks, we do like to have healthy snacks. I'm seeing a lot of vegetable platters and fruit platters, and then an occasional treat. And I'll take a line from Miss Reagan in this piazza, "Three treats down the line, don't be a piggy wiggy." So our first graders learn it really quickly. But so is it's moderation, so we do wanna continue that. And that's, you're gonna remember that one, Dr. Stella. So that's my report for tonight. I'd like to let Nancy White come up. Next week, we are going ahead with the field testing for Sback, and then she'll give a little update with that.
Thank you. Don't be a piggy wiggy. Smarter Balance assessment will begin on Monday, April 28. We have a three-week window. We should be wrapping up by May 16. Every student is scheduled for no more than an hour at a time for their testing. The first day probably take a little bit longer. Teachers are getting used to how to get into the interface and how to set up a test for students and get the kids ready. But we're not letting students sit front of the computer for more than an hour. If they're not finished, they can have another opportunity. Their tests are on time, so as much time as they need, but within moderation, we're not gonna have anybody going for days and days and days if they really feel that it's enough from the teacher. We're starting Monday, we'll have nine different venues to begin. We're using the tech center, the library, computer room A, and iPads in classrooms. So it should be done in about three weeks throughout the state of Connecticut. This is the third wave of testing. We chose the third testing window, and over 380,000 tests have been completed throughout Connecticut. And throughout the country, millions have actually been completed. So we're looking forward to getting it started and seeing how it works, and getting a lot of information about what this is gonna be about when next year it actually will count as a test. This year it's a field test, testing the questions. Next year, it'll actually count for kids, and we wanna really make sure we know what we're doing and get the kids comfortable using the computers. Starting Monday.
And I want to thank you for your work with that. And I would say here at Beecher Road School, our teachers have been very, very careful as far as how to approach a new type of testing. I've visited the lab a number of times to watch them, too, and adult approach is very, very important in working with students. Our students pick up from us on any anxieties or things like that. So what I've seen and what I've heard is that there are a number of learning opportunities with the Sback, and that's how do you use something that will be part of our lives, and that's online testing, but done in moderation, because children are not there for long periods of time, and there is a focus on certain skills that they use with online. And so the emphasis on getting children to relax when they do it, it's not a measured environment as far as marking and so on. And so the approach is an important one. And we like to consider the fact that we do take good care of our children here, and we will take good care of our children here with this type of thing. And it won't dominate what we're doing, either. You know, I started off by focusing on the arts, there are a lot of other things to focus on. We have, for example, the swimming Olympics that's coming up in May, I think it's May 9th or so on, a whole number of things. So our rule is not to let these types of things interfere with our general approach to education, or I'll focus on children, too. So and Mrs. White is a key person in, working with Mrs. Prisco and staff, with Rick Wood, these are people who are very sensitive to children and care a lot about them, and, you know, will help to create the environment that we, that's conducive for learning something new as we move along. And thank you also, Mrs. Prisco, for your work as chair of the committee. We thank the committee. And Mr. Pullo for your work with Mrs. Roddy, and going to the, out to the city gates, you might say, to look at different places and try to improve on anything we do. We always try to improve. And I know you went to the middle school as well, to a number of fairs and things of that sort, so I don't know if you want to make any comment on that.
I think Mrs. Prisco...
I think Mrs. Prisco really captured it beautifully, why, excuse me, why reinvent the wheel when it's already out there and it's round? What was great was we had receptive partners in the other community school districts, and everybody's feeling the same challenges that we are here at Beechwood Road School. You're limited by the USDA guidelines and then balanced with the state's guidelines, which are not always in alignment with the federal USDA. In fact, the state is more stringent in their menu content. So it's how do you be creative, I mean, you know it in your home lot, how do you be creative and keep the dinner table interesting, keep them coming, and still maintain a healthy balance? It's wonderful, too, because we've made some discoveries of some healthy products that are out there that, you know, you didn't think of in the past, per se. As Mrs. Prisco mentioned, with the help of the Fannenbecker family collaborative effort there, you know, Subway could potentially be introduced. Be, you know, we eat there in our lunches, et cetera, and there's a healthy component to that, but it has to be specifically mixed to meet the USDA standards to be served in the school. So it's great that an organization like Subway recognizes the constraints that are put on school districts, and it's not just K to six, it's K to 12, it's colleges as well, to a lesser extent, the colleges, but very stringent on the K to 12 venue. So it's great to have partners like Subway that are out there and that are helping to make our job easier and hopefully enhance the menu offerings here. And just as a side note, this Friday's Chicken Alfredo, I had no influence in.
I'll tell my wife on Friday I'm not hungry. Sign me up. But we thank you for that, and I know you'll be involved with tools for school this week too, and looking at our environment. And we're absolutely thrilled, Mrs. Prisco, that we're involving more and more students in our efforts as far as sustainability and also wellness.
You're all set? Okay. Facilities, Karen?
We met earlier last month, and we received an update on the boiler removal, which Dr. Stella already mentioned, and also on the efforts to make arrangements and plan for storage items, temporary moves from the classroom once work starts, and summer plans. We were updated on all of those issues. We also received an update on the steep grant, which has been reapplied for that, and hope that it will come through to be used in the spring of 2015, coordinated with the construction on the site. We received a sustainability update from Mrs. Prisco, which she touched on all the points.
The building committee, I think Dr. Stella, you know, touched on the components there. The contract's being finalized, the date for signing is hopefully May 1st. There was some money allocated by the town ahead of the contract to allow some purchasing and some things like that, but you know, May 1st is hopefully the signing. Okay. Policy? Matt's not here. Oh dear. So I guess we just have a motion there to accept the...
5125 was taken out of the review because it was reviewed by board council. So that's the reason it's separate from the 5,000, which has not been adopted.
Okay.
Move that we adopt policy 5125 as revised.
Okay. All those in favor? Great, thank you. And we only have like one policy, like a couple policies left, and then the whole thing...
And you start all over again.
Yeah, I know, pretty much, but you didn't have to say that. Matt's happy to do it for the rest of his life, but...
That's right. Just keep going through it.
You know, if I can add one thing related to policy, one of the areas as a school district that we're looking at is technology, because the law is not keeping up with the technology. And we're fortunate with our board council, with the team from Virgil and Moses, that we have an expert on that field of technology, and we're looking at what kind of contracts are signed, what are the provisions of it, how data is stored, things like that. So we're taking a very close look at it. And this is something that a lot of districts aren't doing, and unfortunately, we're in contact with CAPS and encouraging that there be some types of workshops throughout the state on that too. But we have a very good team, as you know, at the school that's helping us, our library tech team. And the meticulousness of dealing with any kind of legal documents or agreements and things that we, that pop up and say agree or not agree to and so on, people put 40 pages to it, we're taking a look at, and where necessary, above, you know, our council with that.
Okay. Okay. Cave? Oh wait, I'm sorry, I skipped finance. Oh, I'm sorry. So the Finance Committee met, reviewed the reports, and reviewed the superintendent's recommendations for the budget surplus, and I don't know if Dr. Stella you want to talk about that a little bit?
How about I'll walk us through the motion?
Okay, so the document before you was presented and discussed of the Finance Committee. So if I may, I'll go through some of the highlights for you. The projected surplus is still on target. In fact, when you look at a month-to-month comparison, this month it went up just under $50,000. And that's a combination of elements, we have a little bit more favorable release of monies in our medical insurance line, and as we go through another month of heating season, we're able to better project what bills are remaining to get us through the prime heating season. We released some additional monies there. So with those components, there is a new item for consideration to utilize the projected surpluses for, and that would be to further reduce the technology request to the town. Just to refresh memories, the original line item under the capital budget for technology was $135,000. An earlier consent that was agreed to by the town was to utilize some monies being returned through special education cost, lower than anticipated special education cost. We were able to reduce the technology request by 40,000 from that appropriation. In addition, through the special education return or projected surplus, the town had consented to allowing us to purchase the kitchen capital items to the tune of about $26,000. So basically, it's a net neutral, I'm sorry, with a few thousand dollars still available in the special education projected surplus that still remains going back to the town or unidentified at this point. But the $50,000 that is up for your consideration to approve using the projected surplus is for further reduction. So if you were to approve the 50,000, the board would in essence be funding 90,000 of the 135,000, and the town would be funding the remaining $45,000. This still leaves, all aside all initiatives requested if approved, this still leaves approximately $28,000 as a contingency or projected to be returned to the town from our surplus. And then one last footnote, we still have a timeline for which to obligate or spend the projected monies, and we're doing this in a tiered fashion, such that if something changes with the projection, we're able to pull back on one of the initiatives. So we're doing it right up through, you know, we've started some obligations and spending in March, and we've got projects and obligations identified through June. So timing, we're safe. Projection wise, as I said, we review the account weekly at minimum, so it's looking like we're pretty well on course at this point.
So how would we approve the 2013-14 budget surplus recommendations as presented by the administration?
Now, can you just repeat how much the board will be paying towards the technology?
With this approval, the board will be paying 90,000 of the $135,000 requested.
It would be 50,000 from...
50,000 tonight. 40,000 was already consented to by the town for the special education. So it's 90,000 with tonight's approval, leaving a remaining balance of $45,000 to be funded by the town.
Any discussion? Polls in favor? Thank you. Cave?
Sorry, we stopped. Now you're... The legislature is, we're getting ready to wind up here in the next couple of weeks. Looks like they're definitely pushing that unified calendar back to 2016, 2017, recognizing that a number of districts have already set their calendars for previous year. And then otherwise, this poll that we're keeping our eye on, there will be, Cave will be having a legislative wrap-up session, May 13th in Hartford. And session's supposed to wrap up May 7th, I think. I also went to the Cave Day on the Hill back at the beginning of March, it wasn't my last board meeting, so I didn't get a chance to report on that. But that was very interesting, we heard from a number of state legislators, as well as the governor, and then some of the Cave lobbyists themselves, and certainly the overarching message was, you know, make our voices heard. There are things we need, concerns we have, you know, we need to be talking to our legislators about it. Certainly the charter schools are making their voices heard, and you know, there's some sentiment that, you know, the state is focused on a lot of specialized issues, and maybe it's time to pay a little more attention to the needs of suburban schools, ordinary schools, and you know, it's a good time to see what it is we want to ask for.
Okay. Aces, we're not a tenth of us, I recorded that last time. New business, we have act out certified staff leave of absence, Dr. Stella?
Yes. We have one leave request, Nicole Chick for returning the leave for 2014-15.
Move that we grant a leave of absence to Nicole Chick for the 2014-15 school year.
Second. Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Okay. And then we have public comment. Did anybody sign up for public comment or want to make public comment? Okay. All right, and we don't have...
Oh, I'm sorry. That's just... You gotta pop, you know, like, yeah, look like a bunny. Just making sure.
Okay, thank you. All right, then.
Move adjournment.
Oh, okay. Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Word adjourned, thank you very much.